They don't want a handshake?
Next item, please.
Item number two, superintendent's update. Agenda items first.
Okay, so we'll just start with, we do this every month at our meetings, retirements. We have four that are going to be recognized tonight. Mary Bassell, over 23 years of service. Mary Abraham, 30 years of service. Perry Peras, over 28 years of service. And Terry Roberts, over 22 years of service. We thank them, we congratulate them, and we appreciate the work they've done to support our district and our students. Let's give them a big round of applause. And I will make sure I send those handwritten cards congratulating them. I have a couple of other agenda item updates. And I'm first going to have Mr. Tim Grzinski come up to talk about air conditioning update. This is something that came up last time, last month, just about the timeline. And there are a couple of agenda items today with air conditioning. So I'll have Mr. Grzinski speak to the timeline.
At superintendent's request, we were looking to see what we could do to speed up the air conditioning project that we have for creating some spaces that are cooled for staff and students to rotate into on warm days. So through the nationally bid NJAPPA contract with JCI, we're going to bring before you tonight and request approval to order all of the equipment so that we can get it in line to be produced and come that much quicker. While we're waiting for the equipment to come, we will also arrange for installation by appropriate HVAC companies, and that'll come before you on the next meeting. Additionally, we have a few other projects. One is to move forward with the McDonald's air conditioning of the media center. McDonald was chosen because of the ease of install, and there are some IEP needs there that we can satisfy with that project also. Additionally, Snow School has an air conditioning room that we need, the air conditioning for IEPs for students that need the cooler temperatures. Also, we have a rooftop unit at Fortson that's failed after 29 years. It had a good life. It is a cooling-only unit that services the music wing, so it is a necessary item to maintain the integrity of the woodwinds, et cetera. And we will continue moving forward and begin installing the following eight elementaries plus Lori K. eight with the media center air conditioning project as soon as labor becomes available to do so.
It'll definitely be appreciated next spring by staff. I heard quite a bit about it, as I'm sure everybody did. It's just hard for students to be in school and have it be 80, 90 degrees and trying to concentrate, so, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Malaico.
And of course, the infrastructure committee is considering the long-term air conditioning status for the district.
I have a quick question. In terms of necessity and so on, is there a process as to how we are choosing, you know, where we proceed first, where we proceed second, and so on?
So any place that has an IEP need obviously moves to the top of the list because I can air condition the space and service the needs of the IEP students that we have. Other than that, it's ease of install. What can I quickly install? Which one already has appropriate pathways for the cooling tubing and things like that?
Trustee Thorpe.
I want to thank the administration and especially Mr. Grzinski after we talked about this at the last board meeting, that they are trying to move everything along faster to help the kids out.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So I have another agenda update, and I do, I'm just going to say I have a few items today with school coming back soon. There's important updates and there's important responses to the board, like to the inquiry from trustee Thorpe. So I'm going to have Troy Patterson come up and just talk about a phone update that is going to the board today on the supplement agenda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Safety and security is really important to us, and part of that is the ability to communicate. Our current phone system was part of the 2003 bond and has lived its life. We last updated parts of the system in 2011, and it's now end of life. There's no longer support for that system. Combine that with a new state law from the state of Michigan called E-911, which requires that when we call 911 from a phone, that 911 knows where that phone is within 7,000 square feet. So practically, for us, that's classroom by classroom. Right now, we can report which building that the phone is coming from, but not where in that building it's coming from. And that time can truly save lives. So we need to be compliant with that law by December of 2019, but it's really the right thing to do is to be as compliant as quickly as possible. Bringing in a new phone system will allow us to meet those requirements. It'll be the first step in meeting those requirements. We're going to have several other steps to do as well, but it starts us on that path. And this is really, the new phone system is also part of our notification system. Currently, our notification system is dependent upon the big CRT TVs that are hanging in a lot of the classrooms, and those again are obsolete and need to be updated. So the phone system is our first step towards updating that as well.
This must be a process, so how long does the process take?
The process of putting the phones in, we would, as soon as we get the go-ahead, we'll start working through that process. We're going to need to maintain two phone systems as we roll a new phone system out. That would occur between roughly September, and we should be done by the end of December of this year. And then, once we have the phone system selected and approved, which we have a recommendation for you, we'll work on getting the notification system tied into that. Yes?
I'm going to assume that this isn't going to do anything like change phone numbers in the district or the type of push-outs we use or any of that kind of?
No. It wouldn't change phone numbers. It, we are, we are going to have to add some direct dialing in phone numbers, but it won't change any phone numbers that any, that the community uses, that anybody knows, and it won't change any of the processes of calling parents as well. It will open up a few other possibilities for us. I mean, in 2018, some of our communication has been streamlined with cell phones and that, so it'll offer us some more flexibility that way, but nothing will change in terms of who somebody calls and what number they call.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
That's all for agenda items.
Okay, non-agenda items?
So I do want to mention, and the board trustees all received this, I sent it on the blog, but we were the cover story for the MASAA State Superintendent Association, and they actually have our vision right on the cover. We were pleasantly surprised. They said they probably could have got about 10 stories out of our district from the work that is going on. Want to mention Ms. Peterson, who took the lead on this, writing it. We actually submitted for a article, but then they did a full-blown story. And so we did send this out, and it's quite an honor, and our association have been recognized. And we have some presentations that are coming up at the state conference in September. So this is really to congratulate everyone. And again, the work of the strategic plan is clearly in this article. So I just want to thank everyone here in the audience, in the crowd, the parents, the students. We know we still have work to do, but it's nice when we get this kind of high-level recognition, so. And next, I would like to call up Mr. Carl Weiss and Dr. Greg Berisi. They are the consultants through the Metro Bureau that have been overseeing the infrastructure committee. And the chairs of the committee are Dr. Josh Kynan and Mr. Tom Wall. So they just are here to provide a brief update. I think when we had the capacity issues going over the last year, as the board trustees know, we had it on every agenda, so we do plan to have this topic on every agenda just to get an update to the board. So we thank these fine gentlemen for their leadership through the Metro Bureau and for taking on this very, very important job for our school district, as we look forward to looking at long-term stability and infrastructure in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Malaico. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and always a pleasure to work with Dearborn Public Schools. We started the planning process back in May for the task force, and we've had two meetings thus far. We met on August 1st with the entire task force, which consists of about 25 members. We met on August 1st and also again on August 15th. Our first meeting was kind of a combination of explaining the charge of the committee, which ultimately is to make a recommendation to the board by the end of October. And also, although many of the members of the team knew each other, they didn't really know each other in this situation and what their roles were, so we also spent some time relationship-building, trust-building, some of the kind of touchy-feely things that you do when people don't really know each other well, so that we could build trust. Where we really began to roll up our sleeves was last week on the August 15th meeting. We had a presentation from Tom Wall on school funding. It was a combination of school finance, school funding 101, where Tom explained where the money comes from for school activities. And in addition to that, he also explained some options for capital expenditures, i.e. school bonds, village campaigns, those types of things. And he explained three options to the task force for that. Now, I have to say at this point that the people on the task force are really great. You couldn't have done a better job picking people from a variety of stakeholders around the district, but also people that are really invested in the district and care, number one, about the kids and making sure that they have the kids first. We didn't have to norm them on that at all. They came prepared for that, so that was really nice to see. And by rolling up our sleeves, we began, after Tom's presentation during that second meeting, we started creating via round tables and six to eight people per table, lists of needs and lists of wants for Dearborn Public Schools. So you can imagine with a variety of stakeholders, and this was a brainstorming activity, i.e. there's no bad idea when you're at the brainstorming phase. And then Tom added some financial data in terms of several options to go to the voters with, and then we asked each table to prioritize their list, i.e. the needs, top five needs for the school district. And then after the meeting, we kind of collated all that information, and we'll start the next meeting with a summary for everyone. And in between meetings, we've been working with the steering committee at the district. And so we're really on schedule with what we created. We planned on six meetings, and it will either take us six meetings or five minutes meetings to finish our work. As we shift forward, we will go from the brainstorming to the consensus building, getting everybody to agree and to support, hopefully, one list that becomes our recommendation. That's where we'll be rolling up our sleeves and working hard. Any questions?
Anybody? Thank you.
Thank you. More to come. I'm going to call up Mark Rumel to the podium. He was approved by the board as the middle school assistant principal, but he was out of town during our last meeting, so I didn't promise the board, and I asked, he wanted to come and see the board. So first Mark in person, congratulations. We give him a big congratulations last month. We're very excited to have him.
Well, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I am a product of the Dearborn Schools. Throughout my career in Dearborn, I knew I could do whatever I wanted with my life, and I decided I wanted to be a teacher. So in 2003, about when those phones were being put in, I was hired in Dearborn. It was a dream come true. I taught at Stelt Middle School, Woodworth Middle School, Edsel Ford High School, the Henry Ford Early College. And then recently, I've had the opportunity to be part of O.L. Smith Middle School in a leadership capacity, and I'm excited and delighted to be part of the Smith community, continuing my life in school in Dearborn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Again, I have a number of items on the list today. If I can ask Mr. Abe Masur to come up and talk about just an update on the boundary line exemption process? And yeah, Mr. Salee, you're going to come up too, in case there's any question on 504 or special ed law.
Good evening, everyone. Just so, give you more updates as we talked about at the last board meeting, try to keep you updated as to what's going on with our new process that we've been using this year. As you know, the first time, we had 15 appeals. One of the things that we did after the first time is pretty much send a generic letter to each family without giving them too many specifics as to why their appeal was denied or whatnot. This time, we gave them all individual letters to, you know, to explain exactly what the appeals committee heard, what they agreed with, didn't agree with, or what have you as far as their decision went. The other thing is if the parents have called after the appeals hearing to ask questions and so on, we've given them that time as well and spoken to them about the situation and talked to them further, but pretty much holding the line that the appeals committee made. I don't have the power or privilege of changing any decision that the appeals committee made, so whatever decision they've made, we've honored. And just spoken to the families about different things and discussed different items that may have come up. The other thing that we have done, like so, for the first appeals committee, we had 15 families who appealed. The second one, we had 11 originally who were appealing, one of which decided to go to the school, to the home school that she was, that the child was assigned to, which is something we encourage all our parents to do. She went and met with her daughter's situation. I know we have to be very generic, so I'll be as generic as possible. Her daughter's situation was she had a speech pathologist, and she was comfortable with the speech pathologist at the other, at another school, but she was concerned with her daughter's speech situation, wanted to meet the speech pathologist, also wanted to meet the social worker and the principal. So we had her go in. She met with the principal, speech pathologist, and social worker, who were both kind enough, I have to say, to come in during the summer because they're technically not on the clock. But they both came in, they took the time to meet with the family. The mother was convinced that the school was going to offer the needed, what her daughter needed to be successful, and she withdrew her name from the appeal. Another one just called. She didn't give many reasons why, but she called and said, you know, "I don't need, I don't need the appeal. I visited the home school." Not sure if she did that, you know, on her own or if she even met with the principal, but she just said, "I visited the home school, so we're happy to be, you know, at the home school," so she withdrew. So we only ended up having nine of the appeals heard that day. So just an update again, like I said, we, you know, our big thing is, does the home school meet, can the home school meet the needs of the child? And whether they're special education, social, what have you? Can the, can the home school meet the needs of the child? If so, then it's hard to convince us that the hardship warrants a school, a school, you know, to place them at another school, at the requested school. As I said before, Dearborn High still stands to be the biggest one that people are requesting. Of the first 15, five of them were Dearborn High students. Of the last nine, three of them, so basically, one-third of all requests have been to Dearborn High. And we've held the line pretty much, and it's, we have not had any approvals to Dearborn High School at this time. Just so you know as well, just checking the enrollment, last week on, I want to say Wednesday or Thursday, Dearborn High's projections were 2,056. This year, their already enrolled number is 2,134 as of last week. So the numbers are still growing despite the fact that we're not approving anyone to Dearborn High. And then the last thing with regard to Dearborn High School and all of our high schools actually is the number of new enrollments. So students who are new to our district that are, you know, coming in and enrolling for the first time in high school. Fortson's already over 70. Dearborn High, I believe, was like 60, and Edsel Ford was at 45. So those are all higher, so we're still continually getting new students. And, you know, just got to figure out what to do from there, which is why the infrastructure committee, one another, the huge value with that committee and some of the results that can come out of there. I don't know if Mr. Salee wants to share anything with regarding to special education and some of them?
I mean, I know, Mike, just, we offer special ed services since it's come on, and we offer them in all schools, and we provide services.
Absolutely. We're very, we're very fortunate in this district that, for the most part, all of our high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools have pretty much the same amount of service from top to bottom. We're very rich with not only special education teachers, social workers, and psychologists, speech and language pathologists, and so on and so forth. And we're also working very closely with student services. And, you know, placements typically, they are their IEP team decisions and whatnot. But again, like I said, we're very fortunate in this district to where we can offer those services pretty much in most schools for, especially our high incidence populations, which is about 90 to 95% of our students with IEPs.
Trustee Petrusk.
This isn't something I was planning on having to talk about, but while I had some free time, I was, went into the neighborhood and was talking to somebody who shared some rumors with me that, they're not unfamiliar to me. They've been the same rumors that I've heard in the past over the years, being brought back up again. But this time, it has to do with students who should be at Crestwood, who are enrolling, being enrolled at Dearborn High. And the other, the other one was that this individual had been going house hunting with their adult son in a neighboring community and had been told by the realtor, who said, "I don't really care because I live in Canton," but I've been told that these students were going to take them out of Dearborn High and get them into Crestwood because they're going to change the bound, the school district boundaries, because that's where the, so I said, "Well, by law, they can't just decide that they're going to opt out of Dearborn's school district. That's something that's voted on and was voted on a long time ago." I said, "I don't know why this realtor would tell you that." But since these rumors tend to persist about, A, students being enrolled who don't live in the district because they're using somebody else's address, do we still do, I know that it was a conversation before, if we could cross-reference addresses and see, are there all of a sudden a lot of people using the same address that don't seem to have a relationship otherwise for new enrollments? Is there a way that we have some kind of software program to kind of estimate that or judge that?
And I'm smiling because we actually went through that today. We have, you know, we have, we do have the software to check addresses and see how many people reside at that address, the last names and so on. One of the people whose appeals decision was denied on Wednesday went to one of our elementary schools, I don't want to say too much, obviously, for confidentiality reasons, but went to the elementary school that they had requested that, you know, we approved the appeal to. We, the appeal was denied. They went to that school and said that they were living with a relative who lives in that neighborhood, so that came back. So we will, you know, give it its due diligence and make sure we investigate and have one of our residency or truancy officers visit the home, visit the home that they used to live in, visit the new home to see where they're living. And if we ideally can make a decision before the end of the week, then we'll make that decision before the end of the week. If not, then we'll wait until the school year. But this is one of those times when, you know, parents, a lot of times, will try to pull on their heartstrings and say, "Well, my child already started here at this school, and now you're going to move them in the middle of the semester." My argument to that is, I'm not the one that put them in that position, you know, as far as filling out a fraudulent address as to where they're supposed to stay. And when parents do have those situations, like if they're legitimate, for example, they might have lost their home or just might have decided to move or what have you, we almost always let them finish, you know, until Christmas break or till, you know, till a good separation time, end of semester, et cetera. The ones living in Dearborn Heights or Inkster and so on, we had another situation today where a family came in with a month-to-month lease, and they were upset because we told them that besides, if they're going to come in with a month-to-month lease, they still have to show us a DTE bill or a utility bill in their name that at least can give us an idea that they're truly living there, because month-to-month leases, as you know, are easy to get. So it's, you know, those things we're dealing with all the time, do some slip through the cracks. I would, I'd love to tell you, we bet a thousand and catch everyone, but we do what we can, and sometimes we get tips from the community. Sometimes people call and say, and sometimes it's from Crestwood. They'll call and say, "Hey, you know, you have this family, you know, I'm calling anonymously. We have this family that says they're living in your district, they're not." They give us the name, we investigate and make a determination from there, and if they don't live here, we send them to the district that they're supposed to live in.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware that we are doing our due diligence, and I also wanted to put to rest the rumor that the Dearborn Heights, the River Oaks neighborhood is not being jettisoned from our district, like this realtor was telling people in order to sell this piece of property, and that that, that would be required ballot proposal and an approval of the state in order to remove them from our boundaries, so.
We get that a lot, where families will say, "My realtor told me that this is the school that my, you know, my kids will go to." And we tell them, "Well, I mean, I'm sorry, but that's, you have to call the, you know, central office and we'll let you know." And so, you know, I know we talked about this last year, but we're moving, oh, you know, effective August 27th, all enrollments will be here at student services. Families will not be enrolling at the schools, and that's one of the reasons why, because of all the different little, exactly, misinformation and different things that go about. That's only for kindergarten through eighth grade. High school without, you know, maybe another date and time, we'll present that to you. But high school, there's still too many nuances that we have to figure out before we can move the high school enrollment here.
But we have updated our website with the correct information.
Correct, absolutely. And it says, "Effective August 27th, the first day of school." That way, school secretaries too can concentrate on, because you're always going to have those little things where families are, you know, getting situated, coming late or whatever. So school secretaries can kind of focus on the business at hand, and all enrollments will be here, because enrollment, as you know, takes some time for paperwork to be filled out, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Trustee Barry.
I just want to emphasize, trustee Petrusk did say a Ken realtor, not a Dearborn area realtor, so I want to make sure, want to say on page.
Trustee Mike.
Speaking on the high schools, we were allowing students who were at Dearborn or Fortson to school, to choose into Edsel since it's the least crowded, and I just got asked that, so.
Provided, provided there aren't a lot of issues with the student, you know. So if there are issues, for example, that, you know, like, for example, behavioral, could be behavioral discipline, it could be attendance. So if your home school, for example, is Fortson, and you're blocks from Fortson, and you have an attendance issue, it's difficult for me to approve a move to Edsel, where now we're relying on mom and dad or whoever to provide adequate and consistent, generally speaking.
We're going to facilitate anybody who wants to move out of.
I think 90, over 90% of the ones that wanted Edsel Ford were approved to Edsel Ford due to space. Sometimes, so you're aware, to special education might make a recommendation after they evaluate the student and so on, and say, "Listen, you know, we had one actually earlier in the, at the end of the school year, you know, this child is going to be, his needs are going to be better at Edsel Ford. He's a Dearborn High School student, but his needs would be better at Edsel Ford because of the programs offered there." So we made that transition as well.
Trustee Thorpe.
Based on the estimates you gave for Dearborn High, I'm just curious, how are we doing with the timeline on the expansion of the cafeteria and the new classrooms?
Hey, that's my building and site committee report.
How are your estimates for Dearborn High cafeteria?
Who knows?
Let's leave it at that.
I'll be reporting on it tonight.
Oh, okay.
The kitchen is ready, the expansion will be ready in October, the four classroom addition will be ready for the start of second semester.
There you go.
You can leave now.
Took the wind out of your sails.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Keep us moving along, and we do have a lot of items. Mason Ali Bazey is going to come up. We're trying to be as responsive to the, to the board with requests. And trustee Thorpe, you talked about staff turnover and things of that nature, so she's here with the report, and she's been dialoguing with him and other things. So like I said, we do have a few items today we got to get through on my commentary.
Good evening. In response, last board meeting, trustee Thorpe asked a question about getting some information regarding resignations and the transfer data for our district. Regarding resignations, I got some data for the last three years, which will be, can we project that? Oh, it's up there? Okay, great. So take a look, 2017, 18, we had, actually, over the last three years, we had 258 resignations, and we had 470 new hires. We also had in 2017, 18, 136 resignations, 2016, 17, 66 resignations, and 15, 16, 56 resignations. And you can see the new hire numbers there. And I just want to specify, this doesn't include retirement information, this is just resignations. Thank you. 2017, 18, transfer data. So I just want to explain that previously, transfers were not an automated process that were, now we use an electronic form, thanks to Neta Alamedine in the HR department. And so we were able to get 17, 18 transfer information fairly quickly in order to get...
What do you mean, transfer?
Transfer data. So some highlights of transfers is that all DFT members, all our teachers... Transfer data, so some highlights of transfers is that all DFT members, all our teachers, have the option each year to fill out a request to transfer form. And then they list the buildings that they'd want to transfer to. So on the next slide, I was going to say, in the past, at the time when teachers were laid off and there were surpluses of teachers, people would do that annually. So when I was first hired, is it, okay, when I was first hired, I everyone tells you, put in your transfer request because that way if you get surplus, you'll have somewhat of a say in where you end up landing. These days, because we don't, we don't have layoffs and we don't have surpluses as often, many people just put in transfers because it's what they've done the last fifteen years of their employment. So oftentimes, even if they get a call from school A calls the teacher from school B during our transfer window and they say, I have a vacancy, are you interested in interviewing? Most times, the teachers don't want to even interview. So as a former principal, I can tell you, I would contact people on the transfer list to the school I was at and give them an opportunity to interview for a position that they're qualified for. And most times, they wouldn't even accept, but they put it in there because the comfort of knowing they have an option.
Like an insurance pile, so.
Yeah, somewhat. So for two thousand seventeen eighteen, there were total of only thirteen transfers from building to building. Thirteen DFT members left eight buildings and then they moved into a total of eleven buildings. So eleven buildings received, teachers off the transfer list. And and that's very low, thirteen transfers is extremely low. District leadership identifies and we analyze potential causes of glaring transfer trends of staff moving in or out of buildings. So if we see a ton of teachers transferring to a building, that's usually a really good sign. Everyone wants to go to that building. What's happening in that building that is attracting, what is about the culture in the building that's attracting staff? And if we see an excessive number or glaring number that catches our attention of transfers out of a building, we're going to also ask the contract, the opposite question, what's wrong? Is there what's going on in the building? We might reach out to staff specifically to find out more about why they chose to transfer out of the building.
Could you tell me the total number of teachers that we have?
We currently have fourteen thousand, ah, you stumped me. I'm sorry, fourteen hundred. Just under fifteen, fifteen hundred, sorry, just under fifteen hundred.
And how many new teachers this fall?
Seventy-five right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, seventy-five right now. So the reason by category, I just, we just kind of categorize them. Now, mind you, it's, we don't always get the reason why people resign. Again, when there's a trend, then we've reached out to find out. We call them up and we say, we just want to know more information about your resignation. That's only when we see that they're we're questioning, is there something going on? Is there a reason why the resignation number is so high? Many of them changed or four of them changed profession. Some of them just don't return from leave. So they go on leave, they start a family and then they decide they're not going to return to work. Six of them did say that they were displeased with an administrator. And again, that's over the data that we've gotten over the last three years for resignation. Six of them specifically said that they're displeased with an administrator. Higher job at a different district, higher pay at a different district, which now with our DFT contract recently passing, I'm happy to say that we are much more competitive than we were last year. Interested in a different assignment or job, that they get an opportunity to be an administrator in another district and they don't want to wait any longer to become an administrator in this district, so that might be a reason. Job closer to home is what I'm hearing more and more these days. Job in another district that's closer to home, the district that their children attend. Layoff is when they go on leave and we never hear from them again, then we just lay them off, we end the employment. License or certificate issues, believe it or not, we have a few of those and that's a reason that they have to resign because they're no longer certified to teach, they haven't renewed their teaching certificate. Many of them start their own business, not many, it says four, but those are the four that we know of, they explore another career option. Personal reasons is really frustrating because really personal reasons can be anything under the sun. Oftentimes, what we find is that they don't give us the reason why, because they don't want to burn bridges, they don't want to upset what they perceive might upset someone, or they don't want to share their response. We have been more actively seeking reasons, though. When we get the resignation, we respond and say, for our purpose of data collection, can you give us a reason for your resignation? I did just do that recently and I didn't get a response. Performance concerns, so thirty-two over the last three years. Lot of times, it could be that they're being held accountable and they're not happy about that or they choose to look elsewhere. And then four of them resigned before they even started, so we hired them and then they resigned before they even started. Fourteen relocated. And I'll move along, sorry, I know I'm taking longer than I should. I talked about the electronic forms, talked about, I talked about all the things on on this slide already, so we can go to the last slide. And then other reasons, so you'll see a lot of other movement going on between buildings. And these are some of those reasons, departmental realignments, you might have a special ed teacher, the department moves them. So Mr. Assaly moves them from one building to another for whatever reason they might have a strength in that area. Same thing for the EL department. Instructional coaches, so when we added all those instructional coaches, positions that created a lot of movement, but those were positions that we added. And so that that opened up jobs in different buildings and people transferred in or out. Principals fill their vacancies, so when they get a retirement or resignation or a newly created position by their title budget or however it's funded, or they have increased enrollment and they get to have another teacher because their student population has grown, then they can go off their transfer list. Other DFT movement is changing positions. So a lot of our teachers will go from teaching in a general ed classroom to teaching in an IC instructional coach position or an English language development position or an administrative intern. So there are a lot of opportunities that the teachers have in our district. And then they return from a leave of absence and there's no position available in the building that they want. Any questions? Any more further information, actually, if you're interested in anything else?
Thank you for the information. It's it's good to see when I looked through the list that besides personal reasons, which tells you nothing, I saw several times that they got a job closer to home and you can't fault them for that. And we're just hoping that the ones that took a job in a different district or left for more pay, as you mentioned, with the new wages that we've agreed to, hopefully, we'll start stop seeing that and be able to keep the teachers that we're training in the in our own district.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll keep us moving along. I have a few more and I know this is kind of a longer commentary, but one thing is, you know, we have still school starting on Monday. We'll be out there, you know, in the buildings for the half day on the twenty-seventh. And so we're very excited and that's why we have a lot of different things. I also wanted to mention, you know, for those who are celebrating tomorrow, Eid Mubarak and happy Eid for anybody that may be celebrating the holiday, we'll also send out a blog post to families in the community. Wanted to mention another thing for the board, which had approved policies, which basically have stated that, you know, we don't approve of guns in schools other than with police officers. So the Michigan Supreme Court in a lawsuit with Ann Arbor came out with a very strong opinion that says local boards have that ability to do so, even though there was a fight over that issue. So and I know we've passed a resolution, we work closely with Chief Adad on making sure we have the SRO officers. I just wanted to mention that.
What is our policy?
Is that we cannot, unless you're a police officer, you cannot carry guns in the schools.
Good.
Can I make an insert also? That was a split vote, four-three, and Justice Beth Clement was the deciding vote. And I would just like to personally thank her on behalf of of our district for the courage to do that. I really appreciate that and I consider that she's made everyone in the state of Michigan safer. So thank you for her.
Okay, and the last thing I have to just comment on, I put out a blog information and clarified, you know, we had some information that was going out on social media about our food service request for proposal. And so I just wanted to mention that we've been very transparent at the board level since this started. In fact, we started introducing this in May of seventeen where we talked about, you know, some enhancements. What we are doing, and we've had the union involved every step of the way, I spoke to the president of the DFSC Alarini. Prior president Renee was also involved in the process, is because we're trying to enhance what we offer for students. We've had people from the community contact us via email. I've also, it started, actually, the thing that that I really listened to was the students on my council. And this is going back about two years ago, when they said, Dr. Malako, we really need to enhance, you know, what we're offering. Now, we do value our current employees, we have great employees in the district, in the food service department, they do great work. I know Mr. Murphy's here right now and he has, but he doesn't have the infrastructure around him for a district our size. And so a lot of districts have moved in this area. And so what we want to offer is healthier choices for students. We want to offer more choices, more halal options would be one area. We we also are looking at possibly whether that be more breakfast programs and after school. So there's a lot of different options in there. And so we put out the request for proposal, which our food service budget does not go into the general fund, it's separate. So you can only bring a small percentage back. I mean, someone could say three hundred thousand would be, but with a district our size can only go back. So you cannot use the money in the food service budget for the general fund to hire numbers of teachers and other staffs. You cannot combine the budget. So we have kind of a surplus in that budget and we feel like we should invest back in our students with the quality. And so with this process, it's been a long process. I'm not an expert in this area and that's why we've been meeting with different companies that offer these services. And then we put out the proposal prior to deciding, and, you know, we've talked at the board level, we actually put together a committee, PTA was involved, we had students involved, we had the union involved, we had staff that actually went and looked at different school districts that offer this. I've also contacted different superintendents. So really, the purpose really goes back to our vision, which is in this magazine, students first, you know, inspire, educate. And that's really what we were listening to, was our students and our parents were telling us, we want more options, we want healthier food options. We see it in the airports, we see it in other districts, we see it in the hospitals. And so we're very excited to do that and there's a process that needs to be followed. There's a review committee right now that's looking at the request for proposal. I'm not on that, I have no idea of the discussion. Mr. Wall and Mr. Rangelis are running that. And, you know, we don't have any decisions coming up. Part of the, there was a rumor that we were deciding on something today, no, that's not true, we're not even ready, we haven't even finished the review process. So there's more to come on that. But I did want to clarify for the community that the main objective of this is really for our students, for increased options, for healthier options, for different choices and to really provide a service that we know people that are have, and we do have nutritious meals. We know we do great work in that way, but we want to enhance what we're offering. And this is the time we could do it. We don't, we just don't have the infrastructure and the staff to be able to do that on our own. And so most districts have moved in this area. And so that is what we're doing and that's why I put out clarifying information. There's a lot of misinformation, including we are obligated to follow state law. The state has approved everything we've done, the state then follows federal regulations. And so we're obligated to take direction from them. You cannot even put out a request until the state approves everything. So everything has gone through a rigorous state process where they review everything and then they gave Mr. Rangelis and Mr. Wall the ability to to move forward.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Can we make it clear, because this is what we seem to be hearing a lot of in the information highway here, is that we're not replacing the staff, the employees that we have here. What we're looking to do is to add some people that will help enhance the food program that we already have with some more innovative ideas and product choices. But that doesn't mean that we're changing who's going to be working in our buildings on a day-to-day level. They will remain, they are not the object of or the intent of this bid. This bid is to help us focus on the selections that the students are going to have for their meals. It has nothing to do with the employees.
Well said. Trustee Lane.
I'd like to push trustee Petlicoff's comment even further.
Okay.
Number one, I recall over my longevity here, many board members, every single one saying through closed sessions and open, that we value our employees. We have some, I think, some DFSC members here, yeah. They're our neighbors. I want them to be employed, I want them to serve our students. I think that we have good value when we do that. I never ever recall a board member saying, we want to get rid of our employees.
Correct.
To save a little bit of money and to get lesser service, I have no interest in that. So if anyone is concerned about that, that's not my opinion, everyone else can express their own. But I can attest that for at least the last several years, I've asked Dr. Malako to try to improve our our healthy options. We all know it's important for performance, we all know we can do better in many food choices. So I know I've asked about it, I remember President Maryam Bazey coming back from a conference a couple of years ago. This is not something that started yesterday, last month, or even within the last six months. It's been a long process and it'll continue to be a long process. So if there are rumors, I I don't know, I tried to look at something online and I couldn't get to it anyways. But I think they're rumors and I would like people to be at rest as far as our perspective of it.
Trustee Amud.
And I also agree with trustee Petlicoff and trustee Lane. And sometimes rumors and innuendos take precedent over facts. And I think that also sometimes people use everyday businesses platforms for different things. And I think it's important to be informed and it's important not to, you know, just not everything that you see on the internet is true. And for some people, they think everything that they see on the internet is true. And this decision did not come in a vacuum. In fact, when I first started serving on the board back in two thousand fifteen, I was able to link an email with a parent complaining, wanting more options and wanting her children to even be more educated in terms of nutrition and so on. And I think that this is what this decision is about, this didn't just come in a vacuum. And furthermore, it is so important to know that absolutely no discussion was ever made and none of us would ever stand for, oh, kicking our own employees out that we value so much and replacing them. And, you know, when you read some rumors online, that's what some people believe. And that is not true. So let's not get distracted by the rumors. I am thrilled that we are going to have more options for our students. That's not, this is not a financial factor. This is about education through health and food. And it's about time that we provide that to our students and we add those services. This is not about replacing services, this is about adding services. And guess what? Our students deserve that, our students now need that. And we have to do everything we can to make sure that we provide that to them. So moving forward.
Trustee Barry.
I'm just going to repeat mostly what my colleagues have said. Trustee Lane mentioned that it was information highway. Go ahead and say it's the fake information highway. If it's our food service employees, if it's our secretaries, our bus drivers, all employees, they're the reason we are such a great district. I, all my years serving this district, I've never heard of any board members. So I'm just like exactly what trustee Lane said. There was a discussion probably about seven, eight years ago and it was the worst part, worst possible time in our country, especially in Dearborn, when people were, the administration back then was kind of hinting about the bus drivers. And we said, no, right away, no, we're not privatizing. Only thing I wanted to add is, and I know Dr. Malako touched on it, is you can't just take money and move it around and spend it the way you want. I I saw on the internet and I see a lot of phone calls, people saying, that's that's ten teachers you can hire, you know, with that four hundred and fifty. No, can't do that. I mean, there's state laws, like Dr. Malako said, that we have to follow. So no to privatization, it's just not going to happen. These are our neighbors, our friends. Something as simple as, you know, our our workers or employees that work in the cafeteria or our bus drivers, they come into contact with our students, with our children every day. We want to know who they are, we're not privatizing those departments, that's for sure. So whoever's putting that information out there, I don't know what what their intentions are, but it's not good.
Trustee Thorpe.
When this discussion resurfaced about a year ago, I talked to my kids and I said, yeah, we're looking at making some changes to the foods. And they were excited. They're, they've not been happy with the food that that they've been getting from. They're, they've not been happy with the food that they've been getting for the last couple of years. Whether it's more of a selection or being able to do something with after-school snacks, we need to evolve the way we serve the food to the kids like we have to evolve the way we provide the education to them. Society's changed.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That's it.
You're done. Next item, please.
Next item. Number three, recognition and acknowledgements.
We have...
Acknowledged donations.
Tom Wall is going to come up for the donations.
Thank you. And since it's summertime, we have a very short list, but I'm sure it'll grow when Mrs. Peterson comes up and does it in the future. The first donation is a hundred dollars. Has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by the Michigan Association of State and Federal Programs Specialists in memory of State Superintendent Brian Winston. A donation of five hundred dollars has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by the Dearborn Public Schools ASC Family Fund, or Activity Fund, in the memory of State Superintendent Brian Winston. A donation of two hundred dollars has been offered to the Dearborn Education Foundation by the Dearborn Federation of School Employees in memory of State Superintendent Brian Winston. Donation of five hundred backpacks filled with magnetic letters, whiteboards, markers, and pencils have been offered to Carter School by Access Youth and Education to be used in the homes with the children to foster literacy development. That completes the list.
Thank you.
Thank you.